Alrighty, so we have to have corn. Everybody's present, can you please go to their agenda, please? Thank you. Alrighty. So it is six thirty. Six thirty-one, thirty-two, something like that. So six thirty-two, let's call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, July first, twenty twenty-five. This is our July work session. We will start off with roll call, starting first. With Ward one, followed by Ward two, three, four, and at large.
Uh, Saltic, Ward one, present.
Thank you.
Henderson, Ward two, present.
Thank you. Wheatley, Ward three, present.
Givens, Ward four, present.
At-large Brooks, present.
Thank you. All five commissioners are present and accounted for. We will now move down our agenda. Starting first with business, and this is resolution. Twenty twenty-five dash zero five, mid-year budget amendment. And so, Mr. Holson.
Yes, so this is the mid-year budget adjustment that has been written by our um accountant, uh Todd Frankenfeld. Um, and it does go ahead and address the issue that we had earlier it with the community garden. Uh, making sure that those funds now are put where they need to be. Um, so you'll see that we have. He's went ahead and adjusted it to put the twenty thousand with the resident tree program. And the ARPA grant expenditure of the fifty-nine thousand back into the garden. For a total grant expenditure of seventy-nine thousand dollars. So this is the resolution that will make that happen. Um, and this will be voted on, of course, at the uh July regular town meeting next Wednesday at seven o'clock.
I'm sorry, did you say fifty-nine thousand to the garden?
I believe that's what it was, but I can double check. I think this was the money that was, wasn't their money that was supposed to be? Maybe I'm wrong.
No, it was twenty-five thousand. And they spent. I believe when we discussed it, they had spent like fourteen thousand.
Yes, so like I said.
Yeah, I don't know what this fifty-nine thousand dollars is. Is it for other grants or is it solely for the garden?
I think it's for other things as well. It's not just for the gardeners. I think it's for other things that they're working on. The the town has.
So we don't have a breakdown? It just, it's just Arpa?
No, Todd. Give this to me while I was down in MML. And he is on vacation and David um is filling in for him. And I thought David might be here, but I have not heard from David today. So unfortunately, I don't have an explanation as to the breakdown, so. I can get that, like I said, we'll have the breakdown for the next um meeting. Next Wednesday. And I can also get information before that and make sure it gets delivered to the commission.
Was it um? Was it the street sweeper? Was that something in addition? I I'm trying to figure out. What this fifty-nine thousand dollars is um? I know it's not just a garden, that much I do know.
It's other stuff.
Is it the sweet street, sweet stripper, sweeper?
I can like.
No, 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 it's not the.
It's not, okay, that's okay. I just wanted to know if that was in there. So we need to find out what the fifty-nine thousand is for, because the twenty thousand. We know that's the tree program.
Right.
That's for the private property trees. I just can't.
I will go and do the research and get that for you for the next meeting.
Yeah, is it just this one page? Is this the only thing?
Yeah, that's the only piece that really is with it. It says, no change, ARPA revenues were received in fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. And the town's kept those revenues in the town fund balance line forty-two oh two. Increase appropriate grant expenditures, and then it goes right into. Those two items, the six zero five, six oh five four point one three. Is the ARPA resident tree program twenty thousand and then six oh five four is the ARPA grant expense of fifty-nine thousand. But I don't have a breakdown as to what is included in the fifty-nine thousand. I know part of that is that garden fix. Because we had to fix that issue. I just, I don't know what the other piece is.
Alright.
I've been trying to get the answer since we got back, but unfortunately I haven't gotten it yet.
And I can't think of anything else. That was the only thing I know we discussed as far as making an amendment.
Alright, well, can you just run that by Wanda? And then we just run that by Wanda before the next meeting, so we can get it straight, so we don't have to. Alright, thanks, let's move on.
Okay. Next item, of course, is the tree trimming. Um, we do have the house, the only tree that was left off the list uh was the tree that's next door to the town hall. That's hanging over the home. Um, I did contact American landscaping to get a quote as to what it would cost us to prune the tree or to cut the tree down. Um, I do have photographs that I took today of the tree. Um, it is a rather large pine tree that's next door. Um, and so I leave it to your discussion as to what you would like to do with that tree. Um, if you want to prune it, it's eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. If you want to cut it down and remove the pine tree, it's one thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars. For the pine tree, um, I will tell you that Karen said. Um, that they have done trimming on this tree before. So this has been a tree that we invested a lot of money in. So um, but I leave it to your discussions and decision of what you would like to do with this tree.
Can you bring the picture back up, please?
Sure will.
And is the tree healthy?
The tree is healthy.
Then why would we cut it down? We can prune it.
That's fine, I'm leaving it in your hands to decide what you want to do.
And does anyone um wish to discuss cutting the tree down?
Yeah, this is Brooks, I wouldn't mind getting rid of it. If it's leaning, I don't, I don't want it to later be a liability. It's not that much money. John, is there any chance since? We have the CB trust funds that we could just include this and that? So that we don't have to pay out of the town funds?
Yes, what I can do is I can definitely do that, but I do know that there's an urgent need for this tree.
Um, yeah, no, no, I'm saying, let's do it now and then count it later towards the funds for the CB trust grant. And but I I think we should not, I think we should take it down. We can always replay, replant something later, but I'd rather not have town property leaning over into. Other like private properties, thank you.
Anyone else?
I agree with Commissioner uh Commissioner Brooks, uh if it's leaning, I think we should probably have it removed.
Which tree is it actually? Because I can't tell from.
The very large pine tree that's in the center of the photograph. That's leaning over the house. See the way it comes down over the home?
Can you point to it with your mouse?
Right in this area, I see the tree, it hangs over here, and then we go back to the main, this is the big tree right here, this big tall pine tree.
So this tree is leaning. Is what you're saying?
It is leaning, it's leaning. Leaning towards the. Alright, so I I saw the tree, I didn't. I don't know, maybe I need to relook at it. I I didn't get a sense that it was leaning towards the house, but what I do acknowledge. That it's hanging over the house. And the hanging over the house. Because of what some of the branches have kind of reached over and touched the roof, it starts to scrape on her. Her roof line, and I think it damaged some of her shingles or something to that effect. But I didn't get that, I didn't get, it could be leaning, I'm not saying it's not. But I didn't get that when I looked at it, but I'll relook at it again tomorrow, you know. So.
There's the photograph right here, and it does show a substantial lean towards the home. If you see the way the picture is. There seems to be a lean that's heading towards the house.
Okay, that's fine then, thank you.
Well, if we. If we do cut it down, I would like for it to be replaced, maybe not with such a larger tree. But I mean, we invested a lot in our tree canopy. And if we're gonna take a tree down, we need to replace it with something else. In my opinion.
I think when we walked through with Denise, John, I think she said a lot of these trees. There, it's not, they're not like native trees to the area. I could be wrong, but I think that's what she said.
You're right, yep.
And so I think. The the, let's just cut it down, that we can replant it, they get free trees all the time. I don't know.
Okay, so. Again, if we cut it down, I'm fine with cutting it down, but I would like it to be replaced. It can be replaced with a native tree. It doesn't have to be as large. I just. I know that we invest a lot in our tree canopy, and I get what you're saying, Commissioner Brooks. But if you're gonna take the tree out. I think we should put something there, even if it's just a bush. We need something, you know what I mean?
I agree with you a hundred percent, but I'm just saying for this tree, let's get rid of it. And then I agree with you, we can, it'll be a good green team project, they can, you know, replant some new trees that are more native to the area.
Alright, anything else on that? Item?
Mr. Holson. I don't have anything else there.
Mr. Henderson, did you have something?
Yeah, I I was just saying, I I I would agree with you, uh. You know, cut the tree down and replace it with some other type of tree. Or like you, like you mentioned, a bush.
Okay. Alright, next item, please.
The next item is our Cottage City Day planning. I did want to um. An idea was put forth from a resident, and I thought maybe we'd bring it forward for you all to talk about and to see what you would like to do. Um, the idea was to basically um create um the essence of a block party where we would block off the street from Cottage Terrace. Over to Parkwood Street and right in front of Town Hall. And we would host Cottage City Day around the Town Hall. Where we would have, you know, music vendors, we'd have the food. We'd have the games, we could do all of it. We could use the gazebo out here, we could have Cottage City Day here at Town Hall. We could have music on the lawn where people could bring blankets and have a picnic out here right in the front. Um, but really try to make it so that the the center of Cottage City. Becomes the focal point for Cottage City Day. And it would make it so that it's brings community together. And does something maybe a little bit different since it's the first year out of the hundredth anniversary. And I was thinking possibly we could give this a try. If it doesn't work, we could always go back to the park. But. I wanted to hear what your thoughts were to see if that would be something that you might entertain for this year.
Alright, we'll start with Ward one. Any discussion? Commissioner Saltic?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I I personally, I think it sounds like a good idea, so I would be.
Horrible idea. Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that on on in front of everybody. I I wait till my turn, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm good, I'm good. Thank you.
Um, so, so um. Um, I just want to make sure I understood, because I I didn't hear everything you said. So you're, you support moving community Cottage City Day from the park to the town hall, correct?
Uh, yeah, I think it, I think it sounds like it could be fun.
I just want to make sure we get it on the record for the minutes. Commissioner, Ward two, Commissioner Henderson?
Yeah, so I, the 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 only problem is that I don't really think it. You know, we have sometimes a lot of people from the outside. Um, coming to Cottage City Day. And also, I'm. I'm I'm just wondering if it's enough room. For everybody to be there and also place for all the um, the children and. You know, um, I'm I'm I'm. You know, the the really wondering if that's enough room, period. For that many people. I yield back.
Okay, so so you need more time to think about it. Is that what I'm here? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna say the same thing, I need more time. I did um, try to picture it. And I just, I'm. Like Commissioner Henderson, I'm concerned there's not enough space. Because Cottage City Day is one of our biggest events. We do get a lot of people coming throughout the day. Most people know that it's at the park, it's a tradition, we've been doing it. Many, many years that way, and I get changed. Sometimes change is great. Sometimes change is not always the best idea. I'm just concerned about the space, the campus, I don't. I can't see us. Hosting Cottage City Day on the Town Hall. Grounds, I just don't see where there's enough room. We have several vehicles, I guess you're gonna have to move them on the street somewhere. Because the parking lot is only so big. The grass in the front, I mean, it's not that much space for people to actually put blankets out. It's also on a slope. So I don't know if that's the. Best place to go, we have to keep in mind, we have seniors, we usually put our seniors in a tent. They like to sit and ha- you know, have their space. And then. Where the food truck's gonna go on the street? I'm just, I'm just, I guess I can't picture it, so I need more time. Um, Commissioner, let's see, Ward four, Commissioner Givens, your thoughts?
I'm sorry, I had that open mic, Julia, it wasn't met towards you, I I it's, I it was actually approached to me. Uh, the the same question was approached to me earlier today, and I did take. Time to really think about it, you know, um, my initial thoughts, and then I thought about it even more. The problem is, is we've, we've kind of had this conversation before about like um. Uh, uh, and. The reason why in in the in previous years, the reason why the park was ideal. In the regards, not so much because it doesn't necessarily have the electric, electrical. You know, facilities and water facilities that we really would desire. But, you know, we have a an aging population and also. You know, the things that Wanda mentioned about the space as well as, uh, but the reality is. It's smoking, burning hot. In front of the Town Hall. You ain't gotta believe me. Go out there tomorrow. Go out there on Thursday and stand in at at twelve o'clock noon. It is burning hot, you don't have enough cover. What the the park provides is a breeze, uh shade cover and stuff like that. And you have a a multitude of that throughout the park. You know, uh, we have, we, you know, anticipate, you know, always having a water slide, a water feature for the kids. There's really not enough room for any of that, to to do that. The secondary thing is why we do, um, the the reason why it's a. Not so much of a great idea in regards to at that particular location for the. For uh Cottage City Day is as opposed to inconveniencing. One family, because you're only inconveniencing one house. As and that's, that's Ann Rivera. And she's used to it, she likes it, she doesn't have a problem with it, or nevertheless, and if you did have to get out. She could get out, right? If she has some type of emergency. Whereas if you put in front of Town Hall. You got a whole street. Of people that you have to cater to. You know, in regards to their own personal situations or whatever, and inconveniencing them and and so on and so forth. Um. So and 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 as well as the other things that, you know, of course, Wanda and well as Mr. Henderson. Uh, mentioned, we've had block parties in the past. And we've always tried to do them, like. I had them. And I, and I always tried to minimize the impact of the community of the people who live on that street, so we've had it in front of the towers. Where people would still get out of the towers, like in being, you know, and it only convenes in like one or two houses. So those are the things we have to kind of continue to be considered about, and the number of people that we always would anticipate, we always want our. Cottage City Day to grow. And uh, and and so uh, there's, there's some other things that, you know, I can mention later if I think more, even more about it, but I mean. It's a major, major thing with the heat. And uh, and and so I yield back, I thank you.
Alright, um, at-large Commissioner Brooks?
Yeah, I don't have a lot to say on this one, I think, um, you know. John, I kind of entrusted you, you put a good one together last year. I would say just kind of listen to some of these pieces, it is very hot out in front of the Town Hall and everything else, but. Other than that, you're good at planning these things, and I think you'll put on a good um Cottage City Day, so that's all I really have, thank you.
Okay. So. I guess we'll discuss it more next week.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll put a schematic together, give you guys a vision, maybe I need to bring you a vision so you guys can see it. I do think something that would be good for seniors is that we would have um air conditioning provided to seniors, especially with the meeting room. So it's possible we could do something inside with the seniors so that they wouldn't have to sit out in the hot heat. Um, we also restrooms, we wouldn't have to rent porta potties, we've got, you know, the bathrooms here in Town Hall. There's a lot of benefit to possibly doing it inside Town Hall. So what I'll do is I'll put a schematic together, give you guys a vision, and then maybe we can go from there.
Okay, keep in mind, we usually have a stage. Sure where you would put that.
Yeah, the town hall. I understand.
Uh, what's next, MML Fall Conference?
That is correct, let me get to the slide, one second, let me scroll down. So, the MML Fall Conference is coming up on October twelfth to the fourteenth. Um, it's the first time in tw- over twenty years that they're actually taking it to the western part of Maryland to Wisp Lodge. Um, we have secured, just so you know, um, the Wisp Lodge is already sold out for MML Fall Conference. Um, and we were very lucky uh to make our reservations, we have not paid for the hotel. We have only reserved it so that if you do want to go, um, space is available for you. Um, but we did want to reach out to you and explain to you all that this is coming up and want to see who would like to go. So that we can lock in those reservations and registrations when it does open. Um, currently, it is, registration is not open yet, but it will be opening soon. And we definitely want to get in there and secure our space for MML Fall Conference.
Alright, so let's just go around and see who's interested in attending. Um, Julia, would you like to go to the Fall Conference?
Um, possibly, I would need to um. To uh, think about it a little bit, but that's, it's definitely a possible, I really enjoyed the summer conference.
Okay, so we'll put you down for a maybe. And just let John know, you know, for sure, once you decide. Um, Commissioner Henderson, will you be attending the Fall Conference?
I, I would like to attend, but I'd like to know what hotel, John?
Yeah.
Are are we speaking of?
It's the Wisp Lodge, that is the actual hotel that's actually going to be holding the conference. Um, and it only has one hundred rooms, and as of today, all the rooms have sold out. We were very lucky, um, I I, because I was on the board, I knew that what was happening. And we were able to secure hotels for all of you. So each one of you does have a room right now on hold, not paid for, nothing's been put out. Um, but you have, you have a room if you so choose you want to go. Um, the photograph of the hotel is on the screen, it's the Wisp Lodge. And um, that's all I can tell you right now.
Yeah, so so what you're saying is that. You do already have a um. Reservations or or rooms set aside. At the Wisp Lodge, right?
That is correct, I have reservations for all of you if you so choose to go. Because we knew this was selling out and it was becoming a very hot commodity and people wanted to get on, wanted to get. Early, early reservations, so we wanted to get it done, so we did.
Okay. Thank you, yes, yes, I I would. I'm very interested. You know. Thank you. I yield back.
Um, thank you. So, um, yes, I want to attend. The Fall Conference, so you can put me down as a yes.
Yeah.
Um, I will say this in regards to the Fall Conference for anyone who may be undecided. Um, in my personal opinion, the Fall Conference is the better conference. It's a smaller attendance, the classrooms are more um. Intimate, they give a lot of good um training during the Fall Conference. Also, if you have signed up for the Academy of Excellence, a lot of um, you'll be able to take. Your core classes or even some elective classes that weren't offered during the Summer Conference. So if you're looking to finish or complete that program, which I believe um Commissioner Henderson and. Commissioner Saltic have both signed up for the Academy. You can take some classes during the Fall Conference. Um, it's a really good conference, if you um. Got something out of the Summer Con- Conference, you'll get a whole lot out of the Fall Conference. If I, I think it's the better conference to me.
Um, Commissioner. Givens?
No. I I won't be attending, um, but one thing, I I'd like to make sure you all. Uh, make sure that there's money in the budget for this. Uh, I don't recall there being enough money for both conferences, but I could be wrong. I yield back.
Yeah, it, Commissioner, I'm gonna call you a Commissioner, Mr. Holson. If if you could check the budget with Todd. To see if there's enough funds for us to attend.
Will do.
Okay, um. I was gonna tell you, say something else about that conference. But I can't think of it now. Um, Commissioner at-large, Mr. Brooks, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I would like to attend, and since I wasn't able to make Towson City, but again echoing what. Demetrius was saying, I think last year we, John, you gave us a rundown, I think there was plenty of money left for commissioners training. Um, but I would like to make sure before everyone gets sent to a second conference, thank you.
Now, so, hold on. Ju- just so we're clear. That's your first conference. Then the.
No, 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 I know.
Okay, I just want, I just want to make sure everybody, not just you, everybody's clear. That that's your first conference, and the Summer Conference is actually the second conference, so you'd make sure, you have to make sure you have enough money left over for. Uh, all five people to attend for the Summer Conference, I yield back.
Gotcha, that's why I was emphasizing, I would like this to be my first conference, thank you.
I will check for everyone, thank you.
Yeah, um. I'm, I'm, me personally, I think since Commissioner Brooks didn't get to attend this summer. I think he definitely, if he chooses, should be allowed to go. And I get what you're saying, Commissioner Givens, because the new budget cycle started. Though the funds for the Summer Conference that we just attended came out of last year's budget. So, so if you attend the Fall Conference. Which will be in October, you'll be, it'll be coming out of the current budget, which actually started today. So, um, Commissioner Givens just wants everyone to understand. That if you attend the Fall Conference, there may not be money, enough funds to cover the Summer Con- Conference, which usually happens in June. But you're gonna check that with Todd and then you'll let us know. Alright, so it sounds like it's three definite. Um. A definite no from Givens and Julia is undecided, but she's gonna let you know.
That sounds great.
Her decision, so I will keep all the rooms for now? Are you planning to go, John? Because you said six rooms.
I definitely would like to go, but. I I'll look at the budget and see where we're at, and if if if, and we can make that decision then.
Okay.
That'll be.
Alright, anything else for us to discuss? If not, we can go to public comments.
So real quickly, I just want to let you guys know that the next meeting next Wednesday, we're gonna talk about the SFMS contract for the Forty-third Avenue. I will have that ready for you all to make the vote. Decide on that, and I did want to make an announcement about the ice cream social happening tomorrow night, it's the red, white, and blue ice cream social. In support of the Blainsburg fireworks down at the trail on the Cottage City side. And it will be from six to eight tomorrow night, so stop down. And we'll be handing out um ice cream to everyone, and we look forward to hopefully you will be able to join us, and happy fourth to everyone. And have a safe weekend.
Okay, so before we leave, it looks, I mean, go to public comments, it looks like there's someone from Alta?
Oh, David's on now. Oh, good.
So maybe you can ask him to explain that fifty-nine thousand dollars.
David, are you on? Who's David?
Yes.
David.
Find the button.
That's okay.
Uh, I'll have to take a look at the the numbers to see if there's, there's money in the budget, but we can get that back to you soon.
No, we're also talking about the um resolution that Todd had put together, do you have the breakdown for the fifty-nine thousand dollars?
Um, let me look in the file.
What was in there?
Fifty-five thousand?
No, it's fifty-nine thousand is what he has in the resolution that he wrote.
Ah, okay, um, I have to look in the files and check.
Okay. I will get back to the commission then.
Okay. I raised my hand, I got a quick question or comment.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
Uh, so I just sent everyone a picture of um. The, some, you see two ceiling fans? And the reason why I sent those to you all is because the gazebos, because of the um, the heat as well as the mosquitoes. It needs uh ceiling fans in there. Um, the um, you have an option, I bought them. Um, the um, you have an option. I bought them because. I'm gonna use them whether y'all buy them from me or a, as a transfer or not, just so you know. But at some juncture, you're gonna need to uh, put those things in there for, for, for the, what's the name of the uh, what's the uh? Of the gazebos. They're um, if you look at them, they're really nice. They're very expensive, but they, we got a. The people are moving and they're brand new, and I just picked them up today and unopened and stuff like that, and uh. And so um, they're very nice, and I think they were, they were two hundred dollars for both of them, and they're usually like. Eight hundred and something dollars uh, for both of them. But um, take it, think about it, and it's, it doesn't really require a vote because it's under the threshold. However, I don't wanna do anything like that without the Commission being okay with it, you know, um. Uh, and so something to think about and just kinda let me know next week or whatever, and if you guys decide you don't wanna do it and you wanna leave it like it is. That's fine. I'll just put them in my house or whatever, so I yield back.
You, did you email them to us?
I texted them to you just now. Uh, I just texted them to you probably like the last. Uh, ten minutes or so, but again, you know, think about it, look at it and think about it, and if you wanna see them, I haven't taken them out of the box, so, but. Nevertheless, uh, uh. But yeah, take a, take a look at them, stuff like that, and then just let, get back to me and let me know, cuz it's not something I'm gonna do tomorrow anyway. You know?
Can you resend it cuz I didn't get it?
Okay, I, I, I can email to you guys if you want. You know?
Yeah, well, I, however is easier for you. I just, it didn't come across my phone.
Yeah, it's easy for me to text it, but you know, I, I, I resend it.
Okay, thanks.
Alright.
Alright, uh huh, so we'll go to public comments. Are there any? Public comments? Is there any? Name in the chat?
Let me check the chat. Hold on one second. Chat. I don't see anything in the chat, and I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, let me. Let me look real quick.
Okay.
Alright, well. I guess we're at the end of the agenda. Oh, shoot. I hate doing this on my phone. How do I get back to the meeting? Okay, um. There aren't any public comments, right?
No.
Okay, so it's seven oh four? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Brooks, I make the motion to adjourn at seven oh four PM.
Thank you, Commissioner Brooks. Thank you, Commissioner Henderson, for your second. We will now call for the vote, starting with Ward one.
Saltzick, Ward one, aye.
Henderson, Ward two, aye.
Wheatley, Ward three, aye.
Givens, Ward four, aye.
Brooks, aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. No nays or abstentions. We are now adjourned. Everyone have a great night, and hopefully we'll see you at the. Fourth of July fireworks tomorrow in the. Park. Waterfront Park.
Alright, see y'all tomorrow. Have a good night.
Good night.